All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 17th. It is 9:02, so we'll call this meeting to order. We ask members who are in the gallery if you could stand or if you're willing and able for the invocation delivered by Pastor Marcia Haney of Bethany United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Creator of all, who is above all, grant our petition for hope and working together for the common good of our city. I pray for peace, prosperity for our city. When our city has peace and prosperity, our families will prosper as well. I pray for your guidance among our leadership concerning all matters, especially those that affect our children and their resources. God help us in the city of Wichita. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, just, and moral. Thank you again, Pastor. Madam Clerk?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on May 10th, 2022.
As every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion on the minutes, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is preceded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received 60A votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Proclamation, law enforcement Memorial Week.
Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, to honor and pay tribute to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in a line of duty for the safety and protection of others. Whereas, our law enforcement officers are the guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free men and women, warriors in the battle against crime, and are dedicated to the preservation of life and property. And whereas, our community desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own police officers and sheriff deputies. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 15th through May 21st, 2022 as Law Enforcement Memorial Week in the city of Wichita, Kansas, and call upon all citizens to express our appreciation to these men and women who are willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard us and our loved ones against all who violate the law. Madam Clerk?
National Public Works Week.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for National Public Works Week, please make way to the front. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Wichita, Kansas. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Wichita, Kansas to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in the importance of public work and the public works program. Whereas, year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022 as National Public Works Week and urge all which attends to join us as we pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you. You know, each year, a theme is selected for Public Works Week, and this year, it's Ready and Resilient. And I think that really encapsulates the city of Wichita's Public Works and Utilities Department, whether it's responding to events, helping out neighbors like the department recently did in Andover after the tornado, or keeping our streets free and clear of snow and ice during winter storms, keeping our storm drains open so that during events, citizens have free access to those things that make our community so great and keep them safe. But you know, day-to-day, behind the scenes, folks are going above and beyond every day and largely going unseen and unrecognized. And for that, we are very thankful for our staff and our employees, customer service clerks, the call center, the crews out on the streets. Thank you very much. Appreciate the proclamation and the community's opportunity to make a difference. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
184th Wing Appreciation Day.
All right, if you're here to receive the proclamation for the 184th Wing Appreciation Day, please make way to the front. All right, I think we got everyone. If you are taking pictures, please feel free to make your way to the front, and there's no barrier that should get in the way of a good picture, so please feel free to move, come forward if you like. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, the 184th Wing, Kansas Air National Guard, McConnell Air Force Base, Kansas, is comprised of nearly 1,400 men and women who defend the nation with combat support and protect the state with ready and capable disaster response. Over half of those airmen live in Wichita and its surrounding communities. Whereas, the 184th Wing, Kansas Air National Guard, McConnell Air Force Base, Kansas, is recognized as a valuable contributor to the economic well-being of the City of Wichita and surrounding communities, providing annually nearly $117 million in local economic impact. Whereas, the 184th Wing, Kansas Air National Guard, McConnell Air Force Base, Kansas, is recognized as a local leader in information technology with the Cyberspace Operations Group, serving as the talent hub for industry and enterprise. Whereas, the 184th Wing, Kansas Air National Guard, McConnell Air Force Base, Kansas, is recognized for the valuable assistance of nearly 60 airmen locally and statewide in support of COVID-19 testing and relief efforts, enabling critical medical and food distribution missions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 17th, 2022, as 184th Wing Appreciation Day in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to thank the airmen of the 184th Wing for their contributions to the peace and security of Wichita, and to learn about the exciting job opportunities available in the wing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Wichita City Council, for the opportunity to recognize the talented group of citizen airmen at the 184th Wing. Over 480 of our nearly 1,300 airmen live within the city limits of Wichita, and 750 reside within the Wichita metropolitan area. These airmen represent the best of the Wichita community, working or going to school full-time while serving their nation and community part-time. These airmen have served our nation around the globe and assisted the community during the pandemic while remaining prepared to support Kansas communities when natural disasters strike. The City of Wichita is a great civic partner for the Kansas Air National Guard, and we appreciate your support in recognizing our outstanding airmen. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Certificate of Recognition, WAM Director Dr. Patricia McDonald.
For Dr. Patricia McDonald, please make her way to the front with anyone else who is here on behalf of the Wichita Art Museum. I'm not sure if I see Dr. McDonald. Is she? Oh, there we go. Okay. I was gonna say, if not, then please someone from the art museum will have to come up. Good. You guys have to close them. Is there a sign out for, out for?
We don't open until 10.
Okay. You can make multiple rows if needed. All right. So, the Wichita Art Museum is now in its 87th year and is one of the oldest, the city's best-known and oldest cultural attractions. After 10 years leading the Wichita Art Museum, Director Dr. Patricia McDonald is set to retire in spring of 2022. Some of the highlights of her leadership include increasing attendance by more than 60%, expanding the growth of public programs by over 100%, growing membership by 170%, creating the Art Garden in 2015, which was a $3.3 million project paid for with private funds, and several other endeavors. So today, we recognize her achievements and contributions to the city with this award. So for that, we thank you, Dr. Patricia McDonald, and I will read the award. Be it hereby known that the City of Wichita, in appreciation of Dr. Patricia McDonald, issues this certificate of recognition for her profound accomplishments and inspiring example of commitment to excel, leadership, hard work, dedication, and contributions, and the countless other acts to better our community.
Gosh, this is so humbling. Thank you for the honor, Mayor and City Council members, and Bob Layton, City Manager, as well. Shortly after I came to the Wichita Art Museum, collectively, we changed the mission statement, and it reads, "The Wichita Art Museum brings people, ideas, and American art together to enrich lives and build community." Note, we put "people" first. I'm a committed art addict, and I serve with a team of people, board and staff, to serve the citizens of Wichita, and we work hard to attract people from the region, too. People want to live in a thriving, dynamic, animated community, and it's not intuitive, necessarily, but the Wichita Art Museum is really a workforce development project because people want to come and be and stay here because we're such a great place to work in, and the arts really very much contribute to that. I want to acknowledge, and particularly since Public Works were on it here today, Mayor, you have a fabulous staff. As the nonprofit, in partnership with the City of Wichita, we work with just sterling, sterling people, and I see a number of them here in the audience today, from City Manager Bob Layton to Pete Studman, we call him City Pete in our building, who, you know, does everything to help the facility, including, you know, working on doorstops that aren't working. You have a, you have a great, great team. So thank you for the honor. I take the recognition back to the amazing staff that I work with because we've done this together. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Public Agenda, Ben Lee, Gangs, Guns, and Violence.
All right, we're gonna roll into our public agenda. Just for a reminder for folks who might be first time presenting, our public agenda is, you have about five minutes. The timer will start. We ask if you're both comfortable and willing to give us your name and your address for the record, and if you go over your five minutes, I'm not gonna cut you off, just might remind you to finish your thought. So is Mr. Ben Lee here? All right, if he is not here, then we will pass over Mr. Ben Lee on the agenda. Madam Clerk, who's next?
Michael McCorkle, The Consequences of Ignoring Climate Change.
Mr. McCorkle, who needs no briefing of how this works. Welcome back, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Michael McCorkle. I reside in District 5. I was born and raised here in Wichita. The April 4th Washington Post headline read, "The World Is Running Out of Options to Hit Climate Goals," UN report shows. The latest United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change report is an analysis of humanity's remaining options to prevent dangerous planetary warming, where "dangerous" means uninhabitable for future generations. Whether humanity can change course after decades of inaction is largely a question of collective resolve. What's needed now is political courage to prioritize people and planet over profit and party. The IPCC issued its first-ever assessment report in 1990. Those projections proved accurate, and Earth's average temperature has already exceeded the estimated 1-degree rise, but the predicted results happened sooner and faster than anticipated. The relationship between fossil fuels and global warming is beyond question. From 2010 to 2019, global emissions were higher than in any previous decade, and we are on track for another global emissions record this decade to our own end. For all the technological challenges and the scale of what must be done to stop climate change, the primary obstacle to expansive climate change action remains political. Policies that could curb carbon emissions get blocked by, quote, "incumbent fossil fuel interest," unquote. After decades of organized obstruction by too many elected leaders, humanity has no chance of making the energy transition gradual or smooth. It is still technically possible to stop climate change, and even economically viable, but the report states it, quote, "cannot be achieved through incremental change," unquote. We, as a species, are at a moment of reckoning. If the world continues on its current track, global average temperatures will rise 5.8 degrees Fahrenheit by the end of the century. Global agriculture will not be sustainable, and mass starvation around the world would follow. The 3,000-page IPCC report also details how coordinated global efforts to scale up renewable energy sources, to overhaul transportation systems, to restructure cities, and to improve agriculture can stop climate change, but it will likely take two to three decades of globally coordinated effort with worse extreme weather yet to come before more stable weather might return. Success on climate change will look like global democracy. We owe it to one another and to all species of life to stabilize and protect the planet's natural systems. The idea that the problem seems so big that no one really thinks that anything they can do can have much of a difference is simply wrong. The only way we can change this trajectory we're on is if people start caring and start speaking up about it and pressuring their city council, their county representatives, and their state and federal legislators to pursue stricter policies. Climate change isn't just an environmental issue. It's a technology, water, food, energy, population issue, and it is also a leadership issue. If we want to change the policies, we need to change our elected leaders. We can use our democracy to save the future for our children and future generations. I hope all of you will prioritize people and planet over profit and party. Thank you for the opportunity to address this, Council.
Thank you. Did Ben Lee make it? All right, if Mr. Lee is not here, then we will continue to the next part of the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 8.
Is there any discussion on a consent agenda or any items that folks would like to pull? Councilmember Ballard.
I'd like to pull 3A.
Is that 3A?
Yes.
Item 3A will be pulled. Is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item 3. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is being seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Having received 6A votes, that motion does pass. We're now back on consent agenda item number 3. The chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to ask a couple questions, and if we could explain the change order, please.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Gary Jansen, City Engineers, gonna answer the questions.
Director Jansen.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmember. So the change order before you this morning, as the project began to develop, you know, things move pretty fast on some of these developments a lot of times, especially with the environment that we're in right now, whether it's residential or commercial. But as the projects were being designed and developed, at the time, the developer didn't know this is Spec Warehouse, exactly where the buildings were gonna be, leaving the initial building, the location, the orientation. And so there was an opportunity right then to fully understand where the entrances would be, where the driveways would be. The bulk of this change order is for the commercial entrances to the property. So we made the decision to move forward with opening bids on the project. To, to, to further expedite the work, we basically bid one package with all the work together, including the underground utility work and the paving work. So at that time, again, without knowing where the buildings would be, we didn't know where the entrances, the openings needed to be. So instead of just throwing a number at it for driveway pavement, which was one option, that would not have allowed the contractor the opportunity to really understand what it is that they were building. We made the decision that adding the driveways would be, need to be done by change order in this manner, so that we knew orientation, location, size at that time. This cost is in line, that's what we've seen on bids on other projects, and is within the original budget, petition amount approved by council.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the item? If there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept item 3A, change orders on consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is being seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Having received 6A votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Report of Board of Bids and Contracts, and Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids and Contracts dated May 16th, 2022.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lauber, Department of Finance.
For the May 16, 2022 Board of Bids, the first item will be engineering for the water distribution system to serve Cedar Creek Edition Phase One for Meese Construction in the amount of $148,131, subject to the award on 6/7/2022 City Council approval and new engineer's estimate and budget authorization. The next item for water distribution system, stormwater system, sanitary sewer to serve Hawthorne Edition for McCullough Excavation Incorporated for the aggregate bid total of $208,583.50. The purchasing, we have the easement access sewer cleaning equipment. This will be for MMP Business Associates for the aggregate bid total of $88,726.26. Next item would be the repair of observation deck stairs at Wichita Art Museum. The recommendation deferred to May 23, 2022. Next item would be the traffic modernization hardware for Converge One Incorporated in the amount of $150,634.40. For airport, we have airport streetside pavement rehabilitation recommended to Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $2636,388.90. We have airport rapid intervention vehicle being deferred to May 23, 2022. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
Are there questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? I remind folks that if you're speaking to the, to an item, it has to be about the actual item and not about anything else. So this is the Board of Bids and Contracts. So Miss, you have the floor.
Okay, my name is Civil, Civil Thrum, 326 North Womack. Where are they going to get this money? Are we going to be taxed again? Is our utilities going to go up again? We don't have the money to support this. It's getting out of hand. You guys, I'm sorry, but you people need to learn, the people are not rich. We are supporting our families, supporting other things. It's getting out of hand. Now, I'd like to ask the guy, where is they going to get the money? From the taxpayers, or are you going to have grants for them? Thank you.
So, and I, I think it's important because Civil comes up every week and asks the same question, that we are able to discuss this, and Civil, you can have a seat. Please have a seat.
Well, I'm asking.
So the, and maybe the manager, Civil, please have a seat. Thank you. So I would like to ask the manager, my understanding is this falls within a budget. Can you briefly explain the process of budgeting for these expenses, and then paying for them, and then, just to, I think alleviate the concerns that Civil, who has graciously brought these concerns to us every week for the past month or two?
Thank you, Mayor. In many cases, this is a long process, because many of the items that are in front of you are capital improvement program, are projects. And so they are included in a capital improvement program, which is a 10-year document. So the council plans for these expenditures to improve our infrastructure, which is important, because it'll cost us a lot more if we don't maintain our infrastructure on a regular basis. And so, excuse me, it's not uncommon for this to be in our budget for five, six, seven years before we're actually going forward. And yes, we are living within our means. If we have projects that come in over budget, we either take savings from other projects, or we trim the project, or if we have to, we'll delay the project. But it's important that we stay within our means. There are multiple funding sources every time we bring bids to you, whether it's for equipment or our capital items. Some would be property tax, some would be grant funds, some would be utility funds, some would come from the airport. Just, again, it depends on each item. But these are all planned expenditures, all included in your budget. And as you know, the council for over 20 years has maintained the same mill levy rate in order to keep a balanced budget, but do it in a way that we don't present too much of a burden to our residents.
Is it fair to say this is the way that we are able to keep our taxes low by repairing items as need instead of delaying that? And I guess the way, I think it could be explained is, if you need new tires on your car and you put it off too long, then it might actually create a more expensive problem with your suspension later down the line, where if you don't solve the problem soon, it actually could create more problems down the line, which costs more money. Is that an accurate assessment?
Mayor, it is a very accurate assessment. We're now to the process where the council has long-range plans and models that exist for every category of infrastructure that we have. And so, yes, we do advance planning to make sure that we're maintaining our infrastructure, so we don't have high repair bills or replacement bills, more importantly, at the backend.
Okay, thank you. So the discussion will come back to the bench on the Board of Bids and Contracts item. Is there further discussion on the Board of Bids and Contracts? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Having received 60A votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. I have one petition for your consideration today. Signatures on the petition represent 100% of the Improvement District and is valid per Kansas statute. There's a new petition for Clear Ridge Edition Phase Two, which is in District Two. In December of last year, the City Council approved drainage improvements to serve this addition. The developers submitted a revised petition with a revised budget to meet current market conditions, which we seem to see often these days. And so it's nice to have the flexibility with this process to be able to approve these types of petitions, revised petitions on a weekly item. I might mention, one thing to be clear, that made me think of with the discussion on the last item, is that these petitions are almost always 100% special assessment to the Improvement District where the improvements are being made. With that, staff recommend the City Council approve the new petition to budget, adopt the amending resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Is there questions for staff on this item? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none? Thank you. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to adopt the amending resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Having received 60A votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Police impound towing contracts.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Captain Ronald Hunt with Wichita Police Department, here for the impound towing contract. The Wichita, little bit of background, the Wichita Police Department impound towing process is outlined in City Code, Section 1197010. Reasons for impound of a vehicle can include a traffic hazard, unsafe to drive, subject to seizure as evidence, reported stolen and recovered, or the driver is taken into police custody. Annually, there are about 1,700 police impounds a year. For many years, the City Council, or I'm sorry, the City has contracted with the tow companies to provide impound towing. An owner may redeem their vehicle by paying all applicable towing and storage charges. This usually occurs about 1,000 times a year. Vehicles that are not redeemed are auctioned, and that totals around 700 vehicles annually. The City issued a RFP for impound towing in December of 2021. A SSSC reviewed the responses, determined they met the specifications, and we began negotiations. Through negotiations, there were some contract adjustments. Impound lots' hours were reduced from 7:00 a.m. to, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., to 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the lots will be closed on Sundays and six holidays. Storage charges are not assessed if the vehicle is redeemed within three days of being closed. This contract is for one year with four one-year extensions, subject to the approval of both parties. A 4% increase is included for each additional year. Fuel is a significant expense for these tow operators. There is no specific fuel surcharge included in the contract. Contract pricing was flat from 2017 through 2020, and from 2020 to 2022. Cumulative increases from 2017 through 2022 are generally between 0 to 4%. You can see from 2017 through 2022, some of them had a 0% increase, the heavy-duty storage processing fee, the per-mileage increase, 2%, winching, 3%, light-duty towing and storage was 4%. We do recommend that you approve the police impound towing storage contract and authorize staff to explore new strategies for enhancing impound towing prior to the renewal period. And I can stand for any questions, or I will defer to finance or legal, who are also part of the negotiation team.
Excellent. Well, we do have Councilmember Johnson on the board. So Councilmember?
Thanks, Mayor. From our last meeting, were there any significant changes that came from conversations?
No, this is basically the same contract that was presented last week. We're just still, you know, we're at a point, we just want to get things in place by June 1st, and then, of course, over the next year, we can look at other strategies or things that the City can do.
Mr. Mayor, there were a few council members that met with tow companies and with staff, and they can talk about that meeting. But the motion is different than the last time this was in front of you, and that is a direction to staff to explore some options for a different approach to impound towing and storage.
It would approve what we have in front of us, but also instruct staff to look?
Before the renewal period reaches us for the first year.
Okay.
So we went into negotiations in good faith with the anticipation of hopefully coming to a compromise with the increase of fees, as we are hoping that folks recognize that inflation hurts everyone, including the people who have to pay to get their car out, so that folks are less likely to lose their car and the vehicle, which will likely cost them their job and could cost them their house. And it came back exactly the same. There was no, there was no room to negotiate. Is that an accurate read of the outcome?
Mayor, you may want the council members that are in the meeting to talk about what happened with the tow companies.
I think it's improper to question council members on the bench, but I just, it's my read on it, so I don't know if there's any, anyone wants to jump in. If that perspective isn't challenged, I'll assume it's, it's accurate. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I was at the meeting with the tow trucks, and I understand where they're coming from, but they were very adamant that they were not willing to negotiate from where we are currently, and made the comment that if we were negotiating now, that they wouldn't even accept the fees that they've come up with, that we're voting on right now. So this is really difficult for me to support. I, I understand inflation and all of that, but I'm also concerned about our citizens. So I understand that there's consequences that, that are in jeopardy when, you know, someone does make a mistake. But some of this appears to be price gouging for me personally, and it's hard for me to support, so.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Your assessment was correct. There was no negotiation.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I also attended the meeting, and I appreciated the opportunity to hear from the wrecking companies that attended. Specifically, Mayor, you said that you hoped someone would address your concern, or otherwise you would make the assumption that it was accurate. And from what I heard you say, your question was that, you know, these increases could potentially have someone lose their home. I did check with staff, and it's, it's difficult to assess, but the average increase per incident would probably be $50 for the individual. So I'm doubtful that that would put someone in a position of losing their home. I also am cognizant of the fact that these occurrences happen rarely. Somebody doesn't get their, their car impounded by the police on a frequent basis. So the fact of jeopardizing our community members' jobs or homes is probably limited. One comment that was made by one of the wrecking companies that was really resounded with me is that he said, of course, we care about the residents of our community, but we are also residents of the community who are trying to provide jobs and opportunities for people in Wichita. And so, you know, that was important to me. They're members of this community, too. From what I'm seeing, it's a 4% or less increase. When we look around every council meeting and we see that staff is bringing items back to us because of increased costs due to fuel, construction materials, and labor, this seems to be consistent with what's happening, not only in our community, our state, but around the country.
So I, thank you, Vice Mayor, for that perspective. If the presenter were to go back to slide 23, I'd like to get some more information or clarification on that perspective of the idea that this, that it's rare that someone would have their, their car auctioned. So Bullet Point 2 reads, "An owner may redeem the vehicle by paying all applicable towing and storage charges." This usually occurs 1,000 times annually, and that's a payment, right?
What do you mean that's a?
Does that mean that it's?
1,000 times that a citizen paid to get their vehicle out of impound, and that's correct.
Okay. Vehicles not redeemed are auctioned around 700 vehicles a year. Is that, the 1,000 vehicles that are stored, that people made payments on, is 700 out of those 1,000 now being auctioned? Or are those 1,000 getting, getting out and the 700 are nearly half not getting out, they're being auctioned? I think that's a good way to read that.
Yes, that would be a good way to read it. 700 vehicles are not gotten out of the impound by the owner, and those vehicles are auctioned off.
So who gets the money when they're auctioned? Is it the lot that is asking for the lot fees to be increased right now? Or is it, who, when a vehicle is auctioned, who, who benefits from that?
So the, most of the money does go to the tow company right now with this contract. After the record company has received their tow expense, 125 does come to the general fund of the city. And a lot of times, we use that money for additional toes in the future that we will have.
So we use that, so the money goes to the lot that increased their fees, so that's, and then also, it comes back to the city so that we can pay for people to tow? Is that a, that's?
I guess I'm not understanding the last part, pay for people to tow.
You said that we also get a percentage of this that comes back to the city that we utilize to pay the, the folks who are towing cars?
We continue to utilize our services after, again, after a vehicle is, we need it maybe processed or whatever, and we have it towed to one of our facilities. We use that money that, from the general fund to pay for those expenses.
And these numbers are based off the, the lower fees? So these numbers are based off last year, the lower fees. So out of 1,700 cars or vehicles that are impounded, based off the fee before the fee increase that we could pass today, 700 out of 1,700 cars are being auctioned off, and those people no longer have their vehicle?
So the, this is based off of last year's figures. So there were, I think there were 17. So there were, I think there were seventeen hundred and thirty-two vehicles that were impounded.
So we know under the current rates, which are lower than the ones presented today, at least seven hundred people lost their vehicles last year. So it's reasonable to believe that if we were to increase this rate, that that number would either maintain or could go up because people are losing their vehicles, likely because they can't afford these rates. Is that accurate? Is that a way I can read this number?
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and City Council, Melinda Walker, purchasing manager. There was actually six hundred and thirty-one cars auctioned. We used, we rounded numbers last year out of the seventeen hundred and ten that were towed. The auction sales were five hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six went to the nine tow companies and eighty thousand five hundred and three dollars came back to the city of Wichita. We have approximately about a hundred WPD impounds where we towed back to property and evidence that they processed the vehicle. So part of that eighty thousand is used to pay for those and also for support staff, goes back to the general fund for the impound clerk.
Thank you. Just a quick question on what you just, the non-rounded figures, seven hundred and ten vehicles last year were towed?
Seventeen hundred and ten.
Seventeen hundred, okay.
One thousand seven hundred and ten.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. Just to, I'm doing my research correctly. I understand that of those impounded vehicles, that almost five hundred of them were abandoned vehicles. So if that is the correct number, most of those people are willingly giving up their cars, not losing them. Is that a correct number? Or I'm probably rounding that number up, but I understand it's around five hundred were abandoned vehicles.
So for, for classification purposes, for the police department, if a vehicle is parked on the street for more than forty-eight hours and, and say a neighbor calls on that vehicle, they, they report it as an abandoned vehicle. So for our classification purposes, we go out, we sticker that vehicle, we give the owner forty-eight hours to, to move it. And then afterwards, if it's not moved, then we would impound it as an abandoned vehicle. So a lot of times, you know, the, the owner, they will call looking for their vehicle or they say that it is drivable, it's not abandoned. And then, you know, we have to direct them to the, the tow lot as to where their vehicle was towed. So I think, again, that for us, it's just a classification purpose as an abandoned vehicle. It may not necessarily be abandoned, but that's what we utilize to, for our classification purposes.
Yeah. So just, the word abandonment doesn't mean the owner no longer wants it. It's more of a technical word you all use to classify when a vehicle breaks down the side of the road, gets stickered, and the owner might not have the means to pick it up within four days. Is that it? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Council, Vice Mayor Tuttle?
Thank you. I, I just was remiss when Councilmember Johnson asked the question and we were supposed to report back from, probably one of the most significant changes from the last time we saw this item until today is that we're directing staff to explore new strategies for enhancing impound towing services prior to the next renewal. So if we're passing this just for one year, not originally as was the first time, and then we're going to look at this situation and see if there's other alternatives. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just reiterate again, I spoke about it a couple of weeks ago, that when you're in this cycle, whenever you are, when you have all this debt piled upon you, whether it's your own actions or not, it's tough to climb out of that. And a lot of times, you know, it's like fifty dollars, but it's fifty dollars on top of the fees that we already have. So it's, it's just tough to look at it and say that we're not trying to help people dig out of the problem instead of becoming entrapped in the problem at the time. So I, I just wanted to make that point because we got to really look at what is the actual point of our criminal justice system, the best possible outcome, and that's people learn their lesson and get back on track. And sometimes piling an extra debt and extra barriers on it is counterproductive to what we're really trying to do out there. So I just wanted to make that point to the public, one of my concerns anyways.
how much again was it to store the car on a lot? Was that about thirty or fifty dollars? Could you go back to that slide? How much is it to park? So we see storage is twenty-seven dollars. I'm pretty sure it's only fourteen dollars a day at the airport. What's twenty-seven dollars for storage compared to the market value? Has anybody looked into that during these discussions?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. One more question, sorry for all my questions. So I think the number that was said was about half a million dollars, was half a million dollars was made on auctioning those vehicles. And that was split between the nine companies, which in realm numbers is about sixty thousand a company. What does that money go to?
Well, the, the, that's, that goes to the tow companies that, and it is split between the nine companies that are involved in the, in the contract. So some may have a little more than others, but probably roughly that's what it is.
Do, I don't know if you know this, is that enough to cover the, I guess, additional hours and stuff that we're cutting in the days? Like would that not have been a good stipend to stay open for folks? Because this contract is cutting hours and cutting days. They're still going to get those dollars from auction, so I guess I'm trying to ask like where, is that, was that not a good additional payment on top of the fees that they're charging? Or maybe what's the disconnect for me? And I don't know if I asked that right, but that's just getting the additional sixty thousand dollars is?
Yeah, and I, I don't know that I could answer for the tow companies or whatever.
Councilmember Johnson, the tow companies do not get zero, they get zero when they tow and nobody pays. So those auction fees pays for their drivers, for their tow trucks, for everything else. So the cost of their tow is probably two hundred and fifty dollars. That's the auction fees that will pay for them and then also reimburses back the city so that we can pay for our police impounds. So it's not a, they're just, it's just not free and clear money for them. When the people do not pay, they still have drivers to pay, office people, their staff, property taxes, insurance. That's the fees that cover those costs for them. So I just want to make sure that's, it's not free money for them.
Thank you for that answer.
So when it, and I'm trying to get a more global perspective on the justifications for the fee increases. When you auction off a car over the last year or two, do we have any data to show? Because we know that used cars have shot up in price and, and value, especially with the supply chain drying up from Asia that has been creating a lot of microchips and other parts that go into these cars. So when folks are auctioning off these cars the last couple of years, have, is there anything to show that they've actually, have they received more money because used cars are worth more now? Or have they seen, received less money because less cars have been auctioned? Do you have any, any data on that?
I don't, I don't know that we have any, any data on that. I mean, we just, we get the expense of what they, what they sell the vehicle for and, and then, you know, under the current contract, for every vehicle that is auctioned, we get a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So the city gets a hundred and twenty-five dollars when a vehicle is auctioned?
Correct.
Regardless of what it sells, sells for?
Right. So in 2020, and I apologize, I did not bring a calculator, 2020, there was a grand total of the, the impound tow has got four hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for six hundred and ninety-nine vehicles. For 2021, they got five hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six for six hundred and thirty-one dollars. So yes, it did increase the price, the cost for the auctions for that. And that's the same with the city of Wichita auction that we just held and we, we had very good success with our auction that we just conducted on May tenth. So there are increases in the auction fees, so.
Okay. Further questions for staff? Thank you so much. This couldn't have been an easy one for you, but we appreciate you taking these questions. Of course, this is an ongoing discussion, so we appreciate you, you stepping up and being willing to, to speak to this. So thank you. Well, a public comment?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Greg Ferris. I represent nine of the ten companies that have submitted bids for this project. Thought I would clarify a few things. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Ballard, Councilmember Hoheisel, Vice Mayor Tuttle, for taking time to sit down with the companies to meet, to go over their different complaints, their different issues. You asked a question, was there any negotiation at the meeting? And you correctly over responded to that no, there wasn't. That's because we submitted a response to an RFP and we negotiated with staff prior to the meeting that you had last week for those fees. And virtually every fee was reduced as a, as a part of that negotiation. So I don't think the companies felt that they were in a good position to negotiate against themselves since they had already in good faith negotiated with the city to reduce the fees that they thought it was important for them to receive. So that is the reason why at the meeting they were not willing to negotiate any further. Plus, these, this RFP was sent in in January, and we all know from January to May what's happened in our economy and what's happened to gas prices, which is a huge expense. But it's not just gas. When you look at the oil prices and, and those things, it doesn't impact just gasoline. It impacts the price of tires. It impacts the price of their lubes. All of those things have gone up to these companies. Even their oil dries and their cleaners have gone up significantly. So when they look at what they bid in January and negotiated down in February and now we're in May, they're not willing to say that they should negotiate down further. There's a couple of other points I think that are important. The six hundred and thirty-one vehicles that were auctioned, a, a good portion of those vehicles have very, very little value. We call them salvage. Probably a third of those vehicles were just salvaged, they were bid on by salvage. You can see the value, the average cost of what those vehicles brought was between eight and nine hundred dollars, based on the numbers that you were, you received from staff. So we're not auctioning off high-end vehicles. A lot of these cars that are towed are on the side of the road, not because somebody parked them there and left them there, but because they maybe were burned out or maybe they were in such bad shape that the, they no longer were operable and the owner just wanted to get rid of it. So we're stuck with those vehicles, literally stuck with them. We have instances of towing mobile homes that have an auction value of zero. We cannot get anybody to bid on them, but we had to tow it with a large vehicle, we had to tow that vehicle, we had to store that vehicle for a minimum of thirty days before we could even put it on auction. It received no money at auction, and then we had to get rid of that vehicle. Now, we did negotiate with staff this time to do something different on some of those kinds of vehicles. But those are not uncommon that we will tow vehicles that we get very little money out of. We have already paid the driver, we don't pay drivers by the hour, they do pay them by the hour, but every time they tow a vehicle, they get a percentage of that tow. Now, they get that percentage whether or not anybody claims that vehicle or it goes to auction. So those costs, when you look at a cost increase of four percent over five years, that's way less than inflation. It's way less than we have talked about when you go back to when this contract started to where we are today. So when you look at those increases, you go, wow, those things went really up. Well, it may look like that, but our property taxes that, you know, are, are assessed by you across the street, by the assessor, have gone up more than four percent. They have to pay them on the lot. The airport doesn't pay property tax. We also have to monitor those lots twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So that's an expense that we have to do. And if we have somebody break in, we're responsible for that. So our insurance has to be, is fairly expensive because we do have those break-ins. At the airport, the airport is not responsible for those things. So when you're trying to compare apples to oranges, it doesn't just work like that. So I want to make sure that you understand that these companies believe they're providing a service to the city to tow these vehicles. They don't make money at a high rate on towing impounds. They make their money on the private toes, they deal with insurance companies, they negotiate those things, all those things happen. But they are willing to tow and they're willing to impound if they can make enough to make it worth their while. And they believe that the numbers that they provided in our RFP were enough, but city negotiated very tough, knocked, and knocked us down. We agreed, and that's where we are today. But we can't go any lower. It's just not worth it to us as a business to go any lower. And so with that, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of nuances. I've been doing this for about ten years and I've learned a lot over ten years. It's really kind of shocking how this industry, you know, operates and how it is, they aren't just out there making tons of money. If you met these people, I think the three councilmember would agree, these are hardworking people that aren't very wealthy, business people that are set back. These are people that are out there working day to day and just trying to make a living. So this is not an oil company that's making millions and millions of dollars. This is a company that lives in Wichita, works in Wichita, and provides a service to Wichita. With that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions because I'm sure you might have some that staff doesn't quite understand the workings of.
And we appreciate you being here and being willing to answer questions. You mentioned that there were lower fees and that negotiating fees back to what they were or closer to what they were would be negotiating against themselves. Which fees in this contract are?
Virtually every one of the fees that are in, and I don't, I didn't bring those numbers, I apologize.
Will you put the slide back up of the fees?
The, we had asked for a light duty towing rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars, a per mile charge of five dollars, a winching fee. And Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was forty dollars for the winching. The storage was forty dollars that we requested, the heavy duty storage, I think was sixty. The processing fee, that's not us, that goes to you. So we didn't care what you wanted, whatever you want, you can have because that money goes directly back to the city. And so you can see just from this, the ones that are shown, virtually every one of those fees are less than we submitted in our RFP response.
So, okay, so all the fees are actually increased except the one the city's getting in the heavy duty storage fee. When you said that lower fees negotiating itself means you guys came in and you wanted a higher fee than the increase that it's currently presented?
We, in our, we responded in good faith to an RFP with numbers that are higher than what we negotiated with the city. And then to go back then and negotiate again seemed like we began to negotiate against ourselves, yes.
Except the council wasn't happy with it.
I'm sorry that you weren't. There's nothing we can do about that. Apologize, but these are business people that have run numbers and believe that these are, numbers are too low today, but they will, they will work because they, in good faith, negotiated those with the city.
Well, they negotiate with the city, but not with the council. The council had a meeting with folks and asked for some space so that we can give some relief to folks who are losing their vehicles. You've mentioned here that these are not high-end vehicles, which makes me assume that the folks who are driving these to and from work when they break down are folks who can't afford, high-end vehicles can't afford probably the fees, at least seven hundred of them can't. So I guess what happens if this contract doesn't go forward?
The city will have to figure out a way to tow vehicles. Because we're not going to do it for less than this, number one. And number two, there is a very simple solution. If you think these fees are high because you think there are people that can't afford that, city has the money then to subsidize those fees to indigent people that can't get their vehicles out. We'll be happy to work with you on that. But we're not going to be the ones that are saying, well, this per, although there are cases and virtually every company, I pulled every single one of my clients, and every single one of those companies, if somebody comes in and they say, hey, I only have X number of dollars, can I get my car? They will work with that company to get them their car, that, that person to get their car. Every company I asked said they do that. So just because we charge that fee doesn't mean they won't work with an individual that comes in. But if somebody comes, has a, you know, they, they were drunk and driving a Cadillac and that got towed, I'm sorry, we're not going to work with them, they're going to charge them the full amount. But if somebody comes in and says, hey, I need my car and I just can't get it and I don't have it. I don't have it, that isn't the reason vehicles get auctioned. They get auctioned because nobody wants them. They don't come to get them. We have to go through an extensive process to even find the owners of some of these vehicles. So, the people that want their vehicles, if they come in, we'll work with them. The other side of that is you have the financial wherewithal to subsidize these four people that you're talking about that can no longer get their car out. If that happens to be the case, we're happy to work with the city for you to pay the difference in whatever that person can't pay. So, don't blame us because somebody can't get their car out, because they got it towed, because the city called us and asked them to tow it. If you want to do something about that, you can do that. So, don't tell us as a business that we have to be the charity. There are charities out there that do that, but also the city is an overriding entity. Who towed that vehicle? Not us. We didn't, we weren't called. You, this isn't off a private lot. This isn't, this is off a city street called by the Wichita Police Department to come get that car, because it was a danger to somebody or for some reason. So, if we, if you're doing that, and you think there's an issue, pay the difference. Don't ask us to.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a clarifying statement. It was made that the towing companies, the wreckers, didn't want to negotiate with council. During the meeting that we had with the wreckers and the three council members, it was not a negotiation meeting. That wasn't, I didn't feel the purpose of the meeting. We have a staff screening and selection committee. They did the negotiation with these nine companies and made a recommendation to council. So, I'm not sure that, I think the council's role is to be negotiating contracts with individual companies. That's what staff is supposed to do, and that's why we have the staff selection and screening committee. So, I just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. This question isn't for you, though, but you brought up something. So, I guess it's Bob or Melinda. So, the processing fee, Mr. Ferris, said is just something that we charge. Is that charged on each towing of a vehicle?
Yes. Yes, it is. We do the first notification. We want to make sure the owner is notified. So, WPD Property and Evidence Staff does that. And it's about $30,000 that the city gets, should be in your agenda. For those, all the impounds get that for first time. As soon as they have not picked it up within the 10 days, we do notification to make sure that they are notified to pick up. So, I think as soon as they get the notification and the car's been towed, WPD Property Staff notifies the owner to come pick it up.
Okay. What is the impact to us if that fee is reduced?
It's $30,000. I'll let the manager, it's $30,000 out of the general fund. That's revenue that we've had for the last 20-some-plus years, 30 years. We've been collecting $30 for WPD. It now goes in the general fund, but that's part of funding that WPD impound clerk that she does for the nine impound lots. She does all the notifications. She makes sure the cars are there. We check the auction. Once the cars are auctioned, we check the tow bills monthly. So, that would just be a reduction in the budget process for that.
Okay. Brian, would we be hurt in that area if it was reduced? And I'm not saying reducing down to zero or anything like that, but if it was reduced $5 or $10, is that going to damage our department?
No, it adds to a deficit in the general fund, right? I mean, it's, it's, there's not enough volume here that it would be a significant loss of revenue. So, I mean, you could do that, but that would have to be sustained then into the future.
But it would make the budget discussions more difficult.
What it does, it goes against a policy that the council adopted during the recession. So, back to 2009, 2010, when we looked at our fees and tried to adjust our fees so we would have full-cost recovery to take pressure off of the property tax, because at that point, we weren't able to balance the budget with the property tax rate that the council wanted to maintain.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify one of the comments that Mr. Ferris made. He said that the tow companies weren't the charity, the businesses aren't the charity, but the city is basically handing the tow truck companies, I think, $2.2 million over a five-year period. I would say that's a pretty significant chunk of business. While I appreciate that, I just wanted to make that point, that that is quite a bit of business that the city is basically handing these companies.
That's over a five-year period. And I understand that you are paying, you're not paying, that you have handed that business to us. But for every one of those that you handed us, we have significant expenses. And so, we just know, just like the manager just said, if you take that money from one source, you have to do it from another. If we lower these fees, that means we have to raise the fees for everybody else we tow for, because you felt like these fees were too low, I mean, too high. And they don't believe, as companies, that they should take a customer over here and charge them an extra $20 or $30, because the city thinks that they're making too much towing vehicles that they believe they're not making enough on. So, it's, it's a balancing act, just like any business has. Their position is, they don't make enough money on toes at this rate to continue to do it. That was their position from day one, when we started the negotiations. That's their position today. They're happy to work with the city and to continue to work with the city. But at least the nine companies that I represent have a pretty firm opinion that their resources could be better spread if that's, than lowering fees. They will go do it somewhere else, number one. Number two, the thing you don't understand is that these tow companies have to be on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They are responsible, anytime the PD calls, they have to be there in 45 minutes. It doesn't matter if it's 1:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the afternoon, whatever time. You know, this is not a business that you could just kind of walk into Walmart anytime you want. This is a demand. You are demanded by the contract to be there at a certain time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They have to respond to these impounds. And so, there are costs involved with that, to be able to do that. So, when you look at the total cost that's involved with doing impounds, it's not just a matter of towing a vehicle off the street. There are all kinds of costs behind the scenes that they are responsible for that go into these costs as they make it up. They did a business analysis, and that's how they came up with these numbers.
Just real quick, I also just wanted to comment on this slide where it says winching fee. When you look at it, it doesn't look terrible, but I think it's the winching fee is like every 15 minutes that's being charged. Is that correct?
No, winching fee isn't every 15 minutes. There's a waiting fee. There-
So, what if you guys are late? Do we, like, deduct?
No, no, that's when we're there, okay? If we're there waiting for, and a lot of times, we get to seeing the accidents, we've been called, and the PD isn't ready for us then to tow. We had to be there in 45 minutes. We might have to wait another half hour, 45 minutes before you allow us to tow that vehicle. That's what the waiting fee is, and that's, I don't know why you-
So, is there a penalty, is there a fee? I mean, do we get to make deductions or something if you guys happen to not make it in the time?
If we don't make it in time, you can, if we miss it, you can actually suspend us from the rotation.
I'm just curious. I wasn't trying to be complicit on that. I'm just curious.
No, you're right. No, you're right. If we don't, if we don't comply with the terms of the contract, which means we have to be there in 45 minutes, it means we have to be, you know, our drivers have to be certain, there's all kinds of lists of things. The chief of police has a right to suspend us then for 10 days, any company, from the rotation. And if they do have multiple violations, they can be removed completely. Their contract becomes null and void as a result of that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Returning to the processing fee discussion, something's not adding up for me. We heard earlier that there were 1,700 impounds, but if we're only collecting $30,000 annually, that's only about 1,000 vehicles getting charged the administration fee. Where's that missing $21,000?
I think she misspoke, because she meant $30. $30. She just referring to the rate, not to the total revenue.
Right, but it says the $30 administration fee included is expected to generate $30,000 annually, which is about 1,000 vehicles. And if we're impounding 1,700, are we not collecting on 700 vehicles?
I think, I think that's a mistake.
Actually, I might answer that for you, Mr. Frye.
Thank you.
And that probably is accurate, because if nobody picks up the vehicle, then you don't get the processing fee, I don't think, do you? So, there's 1,000 cars being picked up. You're getting the processing fee on the 1,000 that are being picked up.
Wouldn't we get the processing fee then at the auction on those abandoned vehicles?
No, you just get, you just get a lump sum.
That is part of the $125 that we collect, is part of that. So, the 1,000 vehicles that we send out and collect, and the tow companies collect their fees and the city's fees, that comes to that. The other 600, 700 vehicles, that's part of the $125 that we get back. And so, for that, so-
Okay. Thank you. Math is hard.
I'll stand by, Mr. Mayor, if there's any other questions for me. Feel free to call me back.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Sorry. This isn't a question, just a couple reflections, I guess. One of the things that resonated me when we were reviewing the green sheet was that the city, and we saw it again, is that the city, under the contract, since, we've had the same contract since 2017, and prices were held flat from 2017 to 2020. And then in 2020, some were increased. The proposed fees are an increase from 2020 level. However, when compared to the 2017 levels, the increase reflects a more modest annual equivalent increase. And so, what I think we're seeing is that we haven't had prices increase since 2017, but the world's changed a lot since 2017. And I do care, and I worry for the community members that this may impact, but it's a relatively small number of community members. I also worry about small businesses in our community, and I think this is an example of a cohort of small businesses that are feeling the strain of the current inflation rates and are asking now to have some recovery from that from six years ago. I think small businesses are the heart of our community. They're the heart of our economic, our economy in Wichita. And so, I want to make sure that if they come to us and they put in a request for proposal, and they say these are the numbers that they need to have to be able to thrive, that, you know, we should, we should consider that, that small businesses are important, as are the community members. I'm also hopeful that we're going to be tasking staff to explore new strategies for enhancing our system, so that if we pass this for one year, we can evaluate it and really see if there are opportunities that can be mutually beneficial for the wrecking companies and for the residents of our community. So, looking forward to seeing more. But at this point, it does really resonate with me that we haven't had an increase in fees. It seems like a hard punch now, but we haven't had an annual increase, as many other of our contracts do. So, just a few reflections. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, or whoever else was involved in the negotiations, this wasn't every company, correct? That was part of this particular package of negotiations right here. We had other, at least one other company?
There is one other company that is not represented by Mr. Ferris that submitted their own proposal.
Okay. And I did see that proposal earlier, and is it in with our package here now?
There is a contract with that firm.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Yeah, I just wanted to check and make sure. Thank you.
So, Mr. Manager, we license folks in the city to tow cars. Is there only 10 licenses issued at this point, or are there more? Or are these, these nine companies the ones that just responded to the RFP?
These are the companies that are in regards to the impound. So, if they are just, say, like AAA, they may just be a regular, if there's an accident and the citizen calls them. So, a citizen can just call their own tow company. But these are just the 10 that are in regards to impounds.
Okay.
And emergencies.
As far as you've already spoke, but-
I clarify that for you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Greg Ferris. There are, it's very confusing. So, let me bear with me. There are two kinds of toes. There's the impounds, where you call, there's actually three kinds. You call because it's an emergency, it needs to be done right away, and the owner is either not able to or can't, because of legal reasons, select his own tow company. I understand, some of these impounds actually turn into private toes, which is the second part, because, or they don't turn into toes at all, because the police officer, and they should, often will allow a car that is not, it's able to be moved. They can drive it, park it in a lot, and let somebody come pick it up for them, so it doesn't actually get impound, and they should do that. The second kind is what they call the private toes, and those toes are not regulated by federal law. And that would be if there was an accident, and the owner of the vehicle said, I want my car towed to Rusty Eck, or I want my car towed to Chevy. That's a private tow, and that's then governed by the insurance and all that. So, there's a license that is for everybody, okay? So, that may be AAA. There are a lot of companies that are licensed. But they didn't bid on the emergency impounds for several reasons. One, they may not have enough trucks. Two, they may not think there's enough money in it. So, those companies are licensed by the city, but they're not part of the impound licensing. Does that help you?
It does. All right. I think we already brought discussion back to the bench, but discussion back to the bench. Further discussion is item. There's no further discussion. Is there a motion to pass this?
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Is there a second?
Do you want me to read the motion for the record, Jennifer? Okay, thank you. I move that the City Council approve the recommended police impound towing contract, authorize the necessary signatures and direct staff to explore new strategies for enhancing impound towing prior to the renewal period.
Second.
Motion is made in the second. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Everyone received four nay votes. That motion does fail. Madam Clerk?
Can it?
Mayor, do you want me to go ahead and read the next item, or do you want to take the question from Vice Mayor Tuttle?
There's not an item to ask a question on. So, this is an open discussion. I'm not sure if we can-
Okay.
Unless legal has a different interpretation.
Under the ordinance, you may take a question from a council member.
The what?
You may take a question from the council member at this time.
If it's a question. Sure, the board has three members on. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I just want to know what our next steps are now. Without an impound contract that's valid, what are we going to do? What is our option?
This one expires at the end of the month, and this new renewal is supposed to take place starting June 1st.
Correct.
So, we have two weeks to figure out an alternative.
Which I understand puts staff in a bad place, but staff should never assume the council will vote a certain way. We, and never leverage the timeline against the freedom for the elected body to make decisions based off the constituents. So, I'm sure we're going to have more discussion about this, and we'll look for another plan. Perhaps this contract comes back. But it's okay if there is not a, a plan at this very moment. I hope it's something that we can take a deeper dive into.
I would think that the people that are going to need impounds over the next, starting June 1st, are going to probably beg to differ on that.
Well, I don't understand stuff coming from staff. I think the council, and the majority of the council in this case, has the right to accept contracts that are appropriate for the, for the public. So-
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just asking staff, what's our plan over the next two weeks? That was my question.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Guess my question's for Bob or Jennifer. So-
So, situation like this, given the ordinance that was sent out some time ago, is a member on the prevailing side able to re-bring an issue back up at a later time during that same meeting for a vote?
The question is, can a member make a motion to reconsider during the same meeting? Yes, during the same meeting.
Okay. And would that have to happen during council member comments? Or at any point?
You know, the ordinance doesn't address that. It could be made, apparently, at any time. I will double check, but I don't think, I don't believe there's any guidance on when that would need to happen.
Okay. So I didn't hit my button quick enough. I was considering a substitute motion on that item. I'm not a fan of the contract as it is and the increased prices, but I do understand the need for small businesses to make, to make money. And if possible, what my substitute motion would have been, would have been to decrease our processing fees by five dollars, since this was a one-year contract with directing staff to, you know, or review alternatives. Still wouldn't have been, you know, necessarily happy about the increases, but if we reduced our fees by five dollars, that's some help while staff is working through this and allowing these services to continue. That is on me, I should have hit my button quicker. But if there is, I guess, support for that, I would move to reconsider that item during council member agenda.
So, couple things. First, as Chair, a motion to reconsider an item, in my interpretation and legislative experience, would be in order so long as we're not reviewing another item at that same time. It has to be within the same meeting, and it, a motion to reconsider is its own, its own motion to bring it pretty much back on the agenda. So you would have to have four votes to bring it back on the agenda, and then you would pretty much start again when it comes to, when it comes to the item, when it comes to discussing the item. Now, I like the idea of possibly lowering our fees, however, I do wonder if that's something that staff might want to look at between now and our next meeting, and then we could bring it up again and have a, another discussion. Because if we lower our fees, then that, I think, gets to where we want to be as far as ensuring that folks aren't being, being stuck with higher costs at a time where they really can't take that higher cost. But again, I think that it might warrant, in my thought, more discussion with staff so they can do an analysis of that. To bring this up again, this item up in another agenda, if it's altered, like if we altered the fees, doesn't need a motion to reconsider. That's the prerogative of the city manager or majority of the council to instruct the city manager to bring it up. So my understanding is we could hear this contract again, or this item again, in our next meeting if staff recommends that we're able to adjust the fees or make a change that is suitable to the majority of the council.
May I address the question? Councilmember asked earlier about the motion to reconsider, just the ordinance does say, as you stated correctly, a motion to reconsider shall be in order provided such a motion to reconsider is made by a member of the side prevailing on the vote of the original motion, providing that any member may second a motion to reconsider, providing that such motion to reconsider shall be made during the same meeting that the original motion was passed, and providing further that motions to reconsider shall be made only once on any particular subject in each meeting. Motions to reconsider shall not be debatable. So there is a motion on the floor at this time.
There's not a second yet.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to reconsider the item that we just considered. Clerk will open the roll. I will be voting now. Ever and receive four yea votes, two nay votes, we're back on the previous item. We're going to take a five-minute break, or 10-minute breaks, folks can use the restroom.
So I just want to make a comment real quick. My name got taken off, and I haven't spoken, so when we come back, I'll be the first speaker. Thank you.
Okay.
The conversation was to ask staff if we were to move forward with eliminating the speed, what the hit on the budget would be. So these are what we call points of information, and just for, I guess for transparency, what would that be? So now the item is back up, the discussion was about possibly altering the money that comes to the city, and again, since this is a change from the original discussion, we got to make sure staff can give us accurate information on it.
Right. Mayor, excuse me, if you, if the council were to eliminate the, for a year, the administrative fee, it's estimated that would be a thirty thousand dollar reduction to the general fund.
It's thirty thousand, that's under the idea that we have a thousand cars that would be impounded that would pay the fee, guess some of them won't pay at all.
That is correct.
Okay. Vice Mayor Tuttle's on the board.
Thank you. I just wanted before to make the observation that there were, because there was some discussion occurring, that we could bring this back. There are, next week is consent only, and then the week after that is Memorial Day, so that was my concern. But then, as I was enjoying the five-minute break, I learned that our contract ends now. So we are putting our community and our community members in a vulnerable position by not having a contract in place or next steps or next actions, so that's a concern to me. I appreciate Councilmember Johnson making another suggestion, and I'll anticipate some more robust discussion on that. It's five dollars. I'm not sure that five dollars is, you know, the impasse for people of, you know, I just, I'm concerned that we're making another kind of mess of taking thirty thousand dollars out of the general fund to save an individual five dollars maybe one time in their life when they get impounded, but I'll look forward to the discussion. I've also heard that, you know, maybe this is, the city could do this, that there's one company that isn't part of the eight, and then the city could do it. The city only has five wreckers. I checked before we went into that meeting. Those wreckers are used for our own vehicles, we don't have the staff or the capacity to be able to do it, and most importantly, I don't think the city should be getting into the wrecking business and competing with private businesses. So as we're moving forward with this conversation, those are just a few things that I wanted to highlight. But when we're really looking at what's best for the community, this is not what's best for the community to not have any plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. So the workshop that we have next Tuesday does not count as a city council meeting, is that correct?
Councilmember, under the council's policies, we're not allowed to bring new business for your consideration at that meeting. Council would need to change its policy in that regard.
Okay, and could we declare an emergency meeting to address, address any of this?
I believe the mayor always has the ability to call for a special meeting.
Okay. Okay, and would we be able to negotiate with other companies here in the meantime?
That I can't answer. I don't know what their willingness would be.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Manager, our next meeting, I believe, is on Wednesday, not Tuesday, is that correct?
Mayor, you've got a budget retreat scheduled for the 25th. On the 24th, you have a consent and workshop. And I don't know that we have any workshop items planned for that meeting, it was just scheduled to be a consent agenda.
So the day after, that's our budget retreat, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Just to clarify, because this is still unfinished council business, it would not be new business. So could that not be brought to next week's consent meeting and addressed if we needed to wrap it up then? And this is still continuing business. It's not new business.
Let Jennifer talk about what's actually in the policy. The practice since I've been here is only consent items. I don't know that we've ever had an old, or a continuing or unfinished business item on, on.
I seem to think we have, but I'd.
What the ordinance says is the consent items, consent agenda shall be restricted to the necessary actions to be taken by council in connection with ordinances, resolutions, or other matters previously approved, placed, unread, or adopted, or routine matters to be approved. So, quite a fit.
Further discussion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Jennifer, just, I guess kindergarten level for me. So that meant no, that we couldn't do that?
I, I believe it's a no.
Okay.
So I guess the option, if we wanted to, and the idea of Assala Main, RFE, might get us where we need to be. But if we needed more time to discuss it while still staying in a timeline of ensuring that service continues, we could call a special meeting for this item before the budget retreat on Wednesday. I believe the budget retreat is, retreats are usually scheduled at, or workshops at 9:30. So we could call a special meeting for nine if we chose to get this item out of the way and then get into the budget. Is that accurate? Is that an option? Or does a timeline still put us in a bind as far as services go?
There'll be a period of time where we will not have a valid contract with any tow firm for a week. And by the way, the retreat's scheduled, I think, for 10, if I read this right. So, but it's the same principle.
We'd have time in the morning. Yeah. It wouldn't be too off, I guess, our schedule. Uh, Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. So just to clarify again, an earlier statement, we're currently without a contract based on the motion that we just voted on and approved earlier, two to four. That made the contract over. And that means there are no towing companies on call, or WPD, or impound, unsafe vehicles, arrests, anything. And if we're relying on one company to pick up the slack, they could be waiting for hours, which is a huge disservice to those people needing wrecker service. So I would hope that we could resolve this this morning rather than waiting another week, or two weeks, or longer. I thought there was some discussion possibly about reducing our administrative fee. And yes, I know what Vice Mayor Tuttle was saying, $5 probably maybe doesn't make a difference in the grand scheme. But if it gets us off of this and moves us forward for the disservice and inconvenience that we could be putting on our citizens by not taking action, then I'd, I'd be all for that. And $30,000, we've got time to figure that out. So I don't know if that's a motion that I'm willing to make, but I'd certainly take a hand at drafting it unless there's more discussion.
And I think you make a good point. We could figure this out now. Would, uh, staff, please put the, the slide back up with the fees that we have that in front of us. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Manager Bob, would we have the capacity to handle a week's worth of towing? I remember you said that the winter is when we see most of the wrecker activity. Do you think it would be putting a strain on us to handle this for a week until we can come back and figure this out?
Councilmember, I, we have, is it five? No. How many of our own tow vehicles? Five, right?
Five.
We have only have, we only have five tow vehicles, which are primarily used just for our, for towing our equipment. What I had said is if, if the one firm that submitted its own proposal was willing to have a contract with us, they could do, I don't know if they could do the full load for a short period of time. But they have not indicated they'd be willing to do their own contract at this point. We'd have to sit, we'd have to sit down with them and then determine what their capacity is. But again, that would not get us, we could not make it through the heavy winter season.
Right. Right. No, I'm just doing the math in my head. And it was 1,700 cases where we hauled off cars over the last year. So that would be about five a day. And if we're not going through the winter time, it's the summer, it's a little easier. You know, it might be three or four wrecks a day that we have to haul off. So five might be doable for a short term, for a week, in order to force to come back and clarify this and kind of come to some consensus. So I was just wondering if our capability of handling three or four wrecks a day was within our, our abilities here.
Again, not a tow expert, but we don't have our own lot at this point that is authorized for toes. We have our lot where we store our own equipment, but we're not a licensed, I don't know that we have appropriate zoning for tow operation. We'd have to take a look at that. We had reviewed that back in 2017. So it's been a while since we've taken a look at what our options are. That's one of the reasons why this motion was made originally the way it is. In fact, to give us an opportunity to check, to look at all of our options on not just private, but also public-private mix.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you asked for this slide to be brought back up. I just, when I look at the numbers of a 4% increase, a 2% increase, a 3% increase, and considering from 2017 to 2020, we had no increase. And then from 2020 to 2022, very little increase. And now seeing this, to me, it's not worth putting the community in jeopardy, as I mentioned previously, of having absolutely no plan. And so I will be curious to see if a substitute motion or an additional motion comes up. I would be able to entertain the $5 decrease if the manager is confident that somewhere we can find $30,000 in the budget. But I just have great concern of what we are doing to our community members over 4, 3, 2% increases. So I hope this discussion will continue because I'm going to be very uncomfortable if we leave here today without a plan.
Well, I mean, it adds up to 13% plus a devaluation of, due to inflation, of money folks are making. So I think it's significant. I, if you add up all the fees here, it's about the increase, about $25. If we knock out the $30 processing fee, I think that, like what Councilmember Johnson says, that gets us to a better place so long as everything's done in one day. Because then, you know, the storage fee per day, is there a limit on per day before, does it just keep racking up? So if you have to wait a full week till your paycheck, is it just for two weeks? Is it continuous? When does it?
It is per day. There is a cap at 30 days. Then this tow company has the right, the wrecker company has the right to auction the vehicle on the 31st day after they're notified for that. Then those vehicles go to auction. So.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just again, I'm, like everyone else, I was, I was a no the last time, but we didn't vote on it. And I came in today as a no as well with the increase on fees. Given the story I talked about at the last meeting, I think that could be harmful for some of the low, lower-income folks in poverty. But the point that was made about our processing fee, to me, in, in good faith, with the new motion, as we have staff, that would be exploring strategies for enhancing impound towing, to me, was working with that. It's not my favorite suggestion. And again, when we eliminate some of the revenue to the city, I also worry about what that means for the position, the person. But, and talking with the city manager, it seems like we'll be okay for one year if we did that. So the, the number 30,000 came from the elimination of the entire processing fee. $5 would have been about $5,000 if we just did that. And I think Vice Mayor is correct. $5 wouldn't be a whole lot. For me, that was just some wiggle room. But I think if we are okay with that processing fee, $30 is a bigger impact for somebody. Again, this year, that doesn't mean it's permanent. That doesn't mean that the city won't get a processing fee after this year. But to work through with staff, some other alternatives for different types of service, then I would support eliminating that fee for this year. It helps those who need it while also trying to negotiate better going forward. So I would, I see two other council members, so I won't make a motion now. I know there's more discussion, but I would, that will be the motion that I make.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that this wouldn't stop, like if my car broke down and I called a private tow. This is just for WPD. Right. So I'm just saying, you know, it's only going to affect, you know, however many times WPD has to do call per day. So, you know, we might be calling, you know, private or AAA or something like that. So it's not the entire city is not going to have a tow truck.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Mayor, I would also say that the slide doesn't give the whole picture as far as the fees increase. You know, you look over here, title verification fees go from $20 to $50. There's a whole list of other fees that are not shown on the slide right here. So I just wanted to make a note of that, too, that I wouldn't say this is misleading. This is just a portion of the whole contract here. So just making a note. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I was going to make a motion. But do we have to go out to the public again?
Good idea.
Wait, what was the comment?
I was going to make a motion, but we hadn't went out to the public, and I didn't know if we had to because we brought this back up.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we, we will open up to the public again. The one thing we're not doing is having staff present because they've already presented. So is there any further comment from the public about this?
Mayor, if you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. See none. So we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion. And if for some reason this doesn't pass, I think I'll be happy to call a meeting on Wednesday morning to take a look at it. I just want to throw that out there.
This Wednesday, sir?
No. No, next Wednesday, I think. So we'd have, if, if the, and this is only if it doesn't pass, so that we, staff has time to look at different options. Or we could do it this Wednesday. I mean, whatever, whatever council needs done. But I know that we're supposed to be here on Wednesday for the budget retreat that starts at 10. We could call this at 9:30 or nine if we needed to. So I just want folks to know that's an option. I don't want anyone to feel like they have to vote on this based on a timeline if, if it's give or take a few days. So, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Don't see any other discussion. I would move that the city council waive the $30 processing fee, approve the recommended police impound towing contract, authorize the necessary signatures, and direct staff to explore new strategies for enhancing impound towing prior to the renewal period.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Brian, Councilmember Frye is on the board to speak to the motion.
Sorry. Just want to check with the council member if that is a one-year reprieve on the $30.
Yes, one year. Sorry.
Thank you.
And so clarification of the motion, there's second and is still in order. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Where they, three to three, the motion still fails. Vice Mayor Tuttle.
It was asked after the last vote, what's the plan until we bring this back again?
Vice Mayor, I don't know until we talk to tow companies. So I can't tell you what we can do in the interim.
Madam Clerk.
Utility billing print service contract.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council, Penny Feist, Public Works and Utilities. This item is to consider the proposals we received for our utility billing, print, and mailing service contract. Public Works and Utilities produces more than 5,500 water bills daily, and we require a reliable printing and mailing service for that function. We have outsourced this service since 2009. And since that time, HC3 has provided that service through two separate agreements and various extensions. The current agreement expired the end of last year, and the current extension expires the end of this month. We issued a request for proposal in November. We received seven proposals in December. Those seven were shortlisted to three proposals that were then interviewed by a selection committee comprised of Public Works, finance, law, and IT staff. Each proposal was evaluated upon the following criteria, which include experience, product understanding, qualifications, approach, cost, and then emerging, emerging or disadvantage business criteria. From that selection committee, HC3 was recommended as the preferred vendor, as they receive the most number one rankings. So here we compare the current price that we have for each type of mailing that we do compared to the new price and the new contract. As you can see, some are the same, some go up slightly, and some decrease slightly. Overall, we don't anticipate a significant impact to our, our print and mailing budget. Staff's recommended action is that city council approve the contract with HC3 Inc. for utility bill printing services for years '22 through 2023, with the possibility of four annual extensions and authorize necessary signatures.
Could you go back to the price slide?
Yes.
Very good. It seems that you're able to negotiate the price down for some of this.
Correct. So some of the, the prices do decrease. That single-page bill with return envelope is by far the highest volume item that we mail. That remains the same. And then some of them did decrease. And so in addition to these prices, we do have some control over the type of correspondence that we send, mails versus postcard. You know, postage plays a lot into that, too. It's cheaper to mail a postcard than a letter. So we are employing or deploying different approaches for how we communicate with customers, too.
Just want to compliment you and the department for being able to find some cost-saving measures on this. Questions for staff? See none. Hold on.
Thank you.
Input from the public on this item? See none. Discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. I did have one, we were, and I just want to highlight the good work that staff is doing when it comes to the possibility of having inserts or adding a couple of lines. During COVID, we thought of creative ways that we can get the message out about important public health information. I think there might be some opportunities to get. I think there might be some opportunities to get, to use some of these bills as a way to communicate directly with the public to kind of save us money and not send out an additional printed medium. So just, could you talk to us about what would, what would be the cost if we wanted to add a couple of lines to the bill as a, a public notice or if we wanted to do an insert?
Sure. So we currently have and would retain with this contract the ability to put a short message on the bill. Top left corner, there's a little box there. It's a free space. It's very small as far as characters go. We can put up to 168 characters with spacing in there. Currently, we're providing information about our conservation program in that box, and so that's free. We'll have that option going forward. As far as the insert, we do retain that ability also. We get a couple of requests each year from either other city departments or nonprofits who'd like to insert maybe a flyer. The vendor has offered to work with those requesters directly. So if city staff approve the message and go through proper vetting, we could just connect those two groups and they can work out specifications, size, print type, color, black and white, those sorts of things. And with that comes its own quote. In the past, we have seen that most groups find it cost prohibitive to use that option. It's usually around $10,000. And that's simply because we have 155,000 water bills. So even if that costs like a nickel, you know, it's still, it gets up to $7,000, $8,000 pretty quickly. And then they have to add in that, that flyer or that piece of information into our existing file of our water bill information. So it does get kind of expensive.
Thank you. All right, we already opened for public comment and saw none. So with that, bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract with HC3 Incorporated for utility bill printing services from 2022 to 2023, with the possibility of four annual extensions and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public exigency wastewater treatment plant number two excess sludge management.
All right, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. For the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. Item before you is affirmation of the manager's public exigency to dispose of accumulated secondary sludge at plant number two, wastewater plant number two located near 57th Street South and Hydraulic. City Code Section 2.64020C authorizes a city manager to approve work in those instances where urgency doesn't allow for the delay for a formal bid process. The manager did authorize a public exigency to dispose of excess treated sludge and wastewater treatment plant number two, at wastewater treatment plant number two on April 18th of this year. An accumulation of the secondary sludge in the primary clarifier was affecting the treatment process, and removal of the unwanted sludge from the clarifier had the potential to increase odors. So staff removed, or the sludge was erroneously transferred from the west holding tank via a drain valve and through the, the plant's underground plumbing system to the primary clarifier. Staff removed the sludge to avoid a treatment upset and to maintain permit compliance. The removed sludge was stored in an open air storage basin on the far south end of the plant. And throughout that process, staff treated the material with odor suppressants. As it was being removed from the primary clarifier and loaded into tanker trucks, it was mixed with lime. And then as it was laid down in the storage basin, odor suppressant was added to the material there as well. Excuse me. On the front end of the operation, a press release was issued to notify the public of the potential for increased odors. And then residents within a mile of the plant received a direct notification from staff via door hangers that evening. At all times, the plant remained in compliance with permit requirements, and at no time was there any risk to public health or the environment as a result of this incident or the operation. Under public exigency, Hodges Farm and Dredging LLC was procured to load, haul, and land apply the staged sludge. They also treated the material for odors as they were handling it. Hodges had the unique ability to incorporate the material into the soil in liquid form. Land application of this, of biosolids is routine and provides beneficial nutrients to crops. However, staff typically provides this operation with dried biosolids, and therefore outside assistance was needed with the specialized equipment. Staff has put measures in place to make sure that this type of incident does not happen again. Appropriate personnel action, including focused process education for the biosolids processing team is put in place. New operating and supervisory protocols are in place for these valves on this equipment, and enhanced monitoring and data review of the new biosolid supervisor has been put in place as well. The final cost for Hodges Farm and Dredging LLC Services was $96,479. The mitigation operation has been buttoned up and finished. There's no further work to do. Funding to cover the cost is available. In the current operating budget for the division, there will be no additional costs to our ratepayers as a result of this incident. Therefore, staff recommends that city council affirm the manager's public exigency approval per city code for the excess sludge treatment and disposal by Hodges. And I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
Questions for staff? I have one. The odor is still quite prevalent over by the plant. Is that because of the sludge from this item or is there something else? Is it from the, I guess, the, the water that's inside the ditch? When folks reach out and they talk about the smell or the odor, is it to associate it with what happened here or is there something else happening? How should I address them?
So the, so the odors that are noticeable now would be generated from the routine treatment process of the plant. More frequently than not, there is some noticeable odor from the plant. We spend about half a million dollars a year to treat for odors within the collection system and on the, on the, the plant grounds itself. That helps to hold odors down but does not eliminate the odors 100%. The temporary increase in odors that, that took place during the time of this operation, that has been mitigated and abated. So, so that, that occurrence is, is having no further impact on the plant and things have returned to normal. We do have the ability to monitor odor-causing compounds at the plant and parts of our collection system in real time, and we can make adjustments in the, in the chemical dosing that we need to make sure that we're hitting our targets.
Don, do you want to talk about what we're going to do during BNR work?
Yes, sir. So part of the BNR project, one of the things that we're looking at very closely is, is putting in place more effective odor mitigation. And one of the parts of the plant that produces a good bit of the odors are the trickling filters. Those will be eliminating, eliminated with the new treatment process that we're putting in place. And then in addition to that, we're looking at a more effective and more efficient biofilter and air handling at the headworks. And there's still more work to be done in terms of the analysis and, and the modeling, but odors will be significantly improved as a result of BNR.
Further questions for staff? See none. Well done. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We're bringing discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to affirm the city manager's public exigency approval? Sorry, some close enough, I guess. Per city code, Section 2.64.020 for the plant number two access sludge mitigation. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been seconded by Councilmember Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure.
Welcome back.
Seems like we were just here. Good morning, Mayor, council members. I'm Kailin Nethercott with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. The property under consideration today is 9120 West Westport, and it's located in Council District Number Five. With council's permission, I'd like to just review the photos first. We have some before and after photos that I think will help you to see the status of the property as it was left by the owner and then what we've done to rectify that situation These are the after photos. Okay. As you can see, the structure was badly damaged by fire on November 24th, 2020. It's a one-story framed dwelling with a full basement. The structure has been vacant since the fire. The property's had an open housing case since the fire and was insured at the time of the fire, but no insurance proceeds have been received by the city to date. The property taxes are current. MABCD contractors first boarded up the property in January of 2021 and generated a special assessment of the amount of $1,518.10. The owner subsequently removed the board-up work under the guise of making repairs. In April of this year, the property was abated and boarded by MABCD contractors with a total billing due of $2,224.32. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in December of 2020, shortly after it burned. In the last five years, there have been nine reported police incidents at this location. Most of these incidents did occur when the property was occupied and have not occurred since the fire. It should be noted that neighborhood inspectors, inspectors are accompanied by Wichita Police Department when any contracted work is completed or if any additional information needs to be posted on the property. The current premise conditions are maintained due to the recent contracted abatement. In terms of the process, the property was first reviewed by the Board of Code, Board of Building Code Standards and Appeals on November 1st, 2021. An attorney representing the mortgage holder was present. Subsequent extensions of time were granted by the BCSA to allow for repairs as there was a building permit in place for the property. That building permit has since expired. No repair work or any inspections of any kind were conducted during the period of time that it was in place. I'll happily answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Kailin, for the report. Appreciate it. I know this has been an ongoing neighborhood battle for some time. I've heard from many, many neighbors in the area.
As have we.
Just to be clear, the rep at the public hearings was not the homeowner, but the lien holder.
It was an attorney acting on behalf of the lien holder. That is correct.
And they have no objection to condemnation recommendation, correct?
They do not.
Okay, thank you.
We've stayed in contact with her just to make sure no circumstances had changed that we'd need to know about, and we're all good.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this item? And this does reside in District Five, so Councilmember Frye is on the board. If you'd like to make a motion, I see no further discussion.
I'm not certain if any public is here.
Shouldn't be.
I'm not sure.
I don't think.
Of course. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No, I, I get this confused sometimes with, with the MAPC, so my apologies.
But I didn't see the homeowner present, so.
I don't necessarily need to pick up too much of your time. I'm here representing the mortgage lien holder and just want to confirm that we have no objection to the demolition of the property.
Thank you. Councilmember, Member Frye, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Oh, we hate to see this. It's past its time for action. So with that, I make a motion that we close the public hearing, adopt the resolution declaring the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended action to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Agreement with Park City for de-annexation.
Morning, Mayor. Council Kathy Sexton, your interim assistant city manager. Pleased to present this item to you today some decades ago, Wichita annexed this piece of property that's about 21 acres, just south of 61st Street North, right beside the floodway. It is currently undeveloped. It is in industrial zoning, but surrounded by Park City. So the owner of this property wants to develop it and also owns adjacent land, which is in Park City. So in, in order to extend services like street utilities, water, sewer, et cetera, it's most beneficial to have all the land in one city. So the intent here is to go ahead and make industrial lots available for sale. That is the owner's intended, stated intention. And of course, our priority for the two cities involved is to have orderly development at the lowest cost to the landowner. So proposed for you today is an agreement between the two cities to, for us to de-annex and Park City to annex it. And for compensation, so to speak, Park City would pay to the city of Wichita 20% of the taxes it collects for the next 25 years from said development. Keeping in mind, of course, that we're trying to be partners with our other neighboring cities, which is really critical to the whole region's growth. Financially, for the city of Wichita, the property's vacant, so tax revenue, as long as it's vacant, is very minimal. But facilitating development does mean future tax revenues for both communities, and that is mutually beneficial. So recommend approval. Stand available for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, Kathy. Just to be clear, I think you said this, we have no investment in the land right now. There is no infrastructure that the city has put into it. So we're not out anything that we have to get repaid immediately.
Nothing meaningful at this time in terms of like water sewer lines underground. Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Further discussion for staff? See none. Well done. Could you put the picture of the map back up for us, please? All right, we'll open up. Is there any public discussion or input on this item? See none. We're bringing discussion back to the bench. I do just want to say that I was able to meet with the mayor of Park City, who gave some, some more information about this, and also our, our city manager and staff and Park City's city manager and staff have been working on this. What, what I believe this does is allows more development, which will help our entire region economically. And so with that, I, I think it's, it's, it's good to move forward with this. And because of that, I will be making the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. And I will ask Vice Mayor Tuttle for a second.
Second.
Motion that's been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Specific Airport Marketing Services Contract.
Jesse, did you drive here or fly here?
I just flew in, and boy, are my arms tired. You lobbed that one up there.
That was good, that was good.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I, I appreciate you having me here today and putting up with my terrible jokes. I'll just go ahead and get started in business. This is regarding our specific airport marketing services contract. Last time this was presented, there were some questions that arose. So we thought this time we'll go ahead and expand the conversation, discuss things that go into airport marketing overall. So why we do it, you know, we do a lot of education and awareness. Our target, target audience are current and potential travelers within the catchment area. And I'll show you in a couple of slides here what that map looks like. Several of our customers are actually first-time travelers, so a lot of this is education. Along with that, we do a lot of economic development. Along with that, we do a lot of economic development. So when an airline launches a new route, it's necessary that we promote these routes to local businesses, to leisure travelers, and the more passengers lead to more destinations, which enhances economic opportunities. It's not just our people flying out, it's those people that are flying back in, which adds to our PDU, the passengers departing each way. And it can't be understated the importance of marketing to air service development. We have marketing incentives that are used by all airports to attract airline service. Airlines do request, and they rely upon airport marketing when they're making their decisions on air service. New market entrance is expensive. It's risky for an airline. We provide market data to support the service, but marketing is required to continue to drive the passenger traffic. Without marketing incentives, it is difficult to attract new service. And don't just take it from us. This is testimonial from some of our airline partners. We asked Allegiant what airport marketing means to them, and they said airport marketing and advertising incentives play a crucial role in helping to set a new route up for success. Cooperative advertising programs like those that exist at ICT are critical in helping us generate the mass market awareness needed when launching a new route. Airline marketing budgets are typically spread across more than 100 markets, so the importance of broadening that reach locally through marketing incentives like those provided by ICT cannot be understated, as said by our partner in Allegiant Air. And then in Southwest, they said marketing incentives play an important role in the launch of new service. They aid in the overall success of a new route, both through public awareness campaigns and by easing some of the initial costs associated with launching a new route, as stated by Jason Chu, who also had a lot of years' experience with United before joining Southwest. We have seen incentives applied and get some additional service for Wichita Eisenhower, specifically Allegiant service to Orlando, Sanford, Destin, and St. Petersburg, Clearwater, as well as airline, excuse me, Alaska Airlines services to Seattle and Southwest Airlines service to Phoenix and St. Louis. When we look at what the industry expectation is from the airlines, they look across the board on what other airports are doing. It varies greatly, but you can see that some of the airport incentives will, you know, be down as much as $100,000 in San Diego for a two-year agreement, but upwards to half a million dollars provided by Seattle and Tampa to help support new service in their markets. So when we look at creating marketing programs, the first thing we do is try to identify the goal. You know, what are our priorities? First, it's passenger revenue development. That's what it comes down to. We want to enhance air service, promote specific markets and routes, increase passenger retention, reinforce the image of the airport, as well as improve customer experience. All these things lead to additional employments. Employments are the number of people getting onboard an aircraft. Passenger traffic and load factors, which is the percent of aircraft full, are the two major tools that we use to measure the success of airport marketing and air service in a community. I mentioned earlier our catchment area. This is a map of that, and you can see that yellow area is pretty broad and it covers different areas, which each one requires a little bit different strategy and technique for how we reach them. The average drive time in that catchment area is about a three and a half hour stretch out. In 2018, which was the last time we were able to perform a full study on this, retainage was 82% in our primary catchment area, about 86% in our metro area. Kansas City is a big competitor of ours. In 2004, they were capturing 34% of our market. That's 34% of our potential travelers were willing to drive to Kansas City to utilize their airport. In 2018, that number was down to 10%. This is something that we're going to continue to keep an eye on as Kansas City is building a new terminal. People get excited about new, airlines get excited about new and launch a new service there, so we want to make sure we remain competitive. This is a different way to look at the numbers with the bar graphs, but you can see the different regions when compared to that first column, you know, have a different mix and competitive airports in them. So for that first bar graph, you see the primary area. We retain about 85% of our market, but it fluctuates as you go northwest, southeast, and whichever airport is near to those specific portions are the main competitors that we're competing with each of those areas. So once we've identified what our goals are, we try building our campaign, and we ask several questions. What are we looking at? Are we looking at new air service providers, a new route? Is this a seasonal promotion like a spring break or Christmas vacation? Is it general education about travel? Are we running parking promotions? Do we have a special event going on? Or are we promoting the fact that when you fly locally, you help out in the local economy? All those questions get asked as we build that campaign. And once we do have the campaign in place, then we look at media. And whether or not we go after traditional or non-traditional kind of drives how we look at results from those things. Print ads and billboards, we don't get as much data back on that. But when you go digital, which is most of that trend right now, is going digital. When you look at internet and social media ads, you can actually get a lot more analytics and see click-through rates. You can see where, how many people went to a landing page. If we ask them to take a certain action of a survey or go to an airline website, we can track that. Now, once they leave our site, though, and go to an airline site to book their travel, that's kind of where that data ends, and it becomes airlines' data there. So the results do vary quite a bit by campaign types. And as I mentioned, you know, we do a lot of education awareness. Those campaigns aren't necessarily specific calls to action, and so you're not going to landing page and clicking and buying a product. A lot of it is awareness, and a lot of times, folks, you know, start thinking about their travel and plan ahead. So it's one of those things that kind of follows in time. But what we do do is a lot of customer surveys. We push them out there and ask folks, if this is your first time traveling, what influenced you to book? And you can see quite a few named the advertisements that they've seen, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, emails, or other promotions. We're trying to gather out, what did you hear? How did you hear about us? And so that way, we kind of know where to target our next campaigns. And at the end of the day, like I said, this is kind of the macro level view at this, but these are the employments that we look at at the end of the year. And '17, '18, '19 were three consecutive record years of growth before we hit the COVID era, and now we're back on the path for rebounding. So that's one thing that we're continuing to track. And here's a few examples of some of the campaigns that we've had. This is an iFly Wichita Community Engagement One, and this was supposed to drive a lot of, you know, grassroots activity, you know, maybe a little bit of user-generated content. There is 3,000 page views, how many people were reached, as well as some contests that we run to try and get more customer engagement. You know, we have the Ford of Fun. This one increased web traffic by 45%, you know, when we started pushing this out. Or the Southwest Phoenix Gateway Contest, which allowed folks to type in quite a bit of their stories, and we had 262 people taking the time to write about their travel experiences. But the reason why we're here is we have a creative agreement that has expired. We did issue an RFP, and we had a selection committee go through that process. Three firms did apply. All were interviewed. One was selected unanimously by that committee. And we are looking at a total airport marketing budget of about $350,000. And this is a budgeting line item that has been adjusted down since COVID. But this is not all for one contract. This agreement for creative marketing services is one of many things that we pull from that marketing line item. And so we also have media purchasing, as well as a lot of different and other initiatives that we do that come out of there. And the marketing dollars for that line item all come from airport revenue, and airport revenue only. So there's no city general fund impact to this. And our airport revenue dollars come from multiple sources, including real estate agreements, concession agreements, and our airline agreements. So this is us plowing it back into the service that we pull from. We have heard the comments and the concerns that, you know, during our conversations since the last time we presented. What I will say that we will do, continue to look at additional performance measures that will help us refine the correlation between what we do with marketing and how we see success in service. So that's something we're going to continue to work with and develop on creating a dashboard for that so that we can better present to you some of that data and analytics. This agreement is for one year, so it has four one-year options, but it's based one year depending on performance, and that's something we'll continue to come back and analyze before we issue any additional years on that. With that said, we recommend that Wichita Airport Authority approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Don't want to slow this up anymore, just some thoughts I had. Looking at the advertisement, definitely love those. Have we looked at promoting some of our direct flights a little more often? The mayor and I were just touring a local business, doing some great things, and they were talking about the impact of direct flights from Wichita. Could we play that up a little more in our marketing, like direct flights to Atlanta, using some imagery there, sights and sounds? I think we have direct flights to Dallas and St. Louis as well, just kind of mixing that in culturally, some of the great stuff in those places.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure to add that to our mix.
Yeah, just want to echo Councilmember Johnson. When we're out talking, particularly to folks who work in the tech sector, they have expressed if they are able to get a direct flight to the West Coast, how beneficial that would be. So love to see, if possible, with staff, what we could be doing more as a council to try to bring in some of those direct flights, as we know, as a direct correlation to our economic development plan and strategy. So, but back to the specific marketing service contract, I do just want to thank you and the staff. A lot of what we wound up tabling this was the desire for more background information, metrics, more information to show the benefit of this type of strategy. I believe you and your staff, and also the folks being contracted, did a great job reaching out to us and giving us that information and moving forward, making sure that we can continuously gather that type of information so that we can make better decisions with the taxpayer funds. So I do want to thank you for that.
Is there further questions or discussion for staff? See none. Thank you. Input from the public on this item?
My name is Sybil Strum. I reside at 326 North Quaman. I have took the airlines. I rode in Delta Airlines. I didn't appreciate it, but I liked American Airlines. Because when I was getting off the plane to come back to Wichita, I asked the guy, could I get some wings? And he said, sure. And that was good. What I'd like you to recommend, that they start doing TV commercials. Because some of us people don't know how to use the computer. So that's my recommendation. And I did think that it's a lot better than what it was because I, my son flies in and out of places. He's been in New York and all that stuff, places. I went to Atlanta. It was hot. And I went to Nashville, and I got on the Grand Lopery. But that's the only thing I recommend that if you want to do that, start televising on television, like back in the olden days, TWA. I don't know if y'all remember TWA, but they had a commercial that said, "Come fly with me." And that's something I think should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public input on this item? If there is none, then we'll bring discussion back to the bench as the further discussion on this item. If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll, members cast the vote. Have received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Vice Mayor Becky Tuttle to attend the Community Leaders of America Forum, May 18th through 20th, 2022, Omaha, Nebraska.
All right, Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Sorry, thank you. I just would like to make the comment that the Community Leaders of America is paying for my travel, so there will not be a cost to the City of Wichita for me to attend this forum. Thank you.
Further discussion on the item? If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion. And we have, for those watching, we have two people and actually maybe four. Is there public input on this? No? Okay. So with that, I want to follow, you know, follow the rules, but also just there is no one really left here. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the travel. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Frye. Clerk will open the roll, members cast the vote. Have received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Councilmembers Brandon Johnson and Brian Fry to attend Leadership Kansas, May 18th through 20th, 22, Garden City, Kansas.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I would just like to be on the record that I'm not seeking any reimbursement for this travel.
Further discussion? Input from the public? See none. Back to the bench. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the travel and expenditures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll, members cast the vote. Have received 68 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Mayor Brandon Whipple to attend the New Deal Leaders 2022 Ideas Summit, May 22nd through 24th, 2022, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
So this is the Leadership and Policy Ideas Summit. It's a great trip, and the New Deal organization is paying for my flight and also my hotels. So with that, there's any input from the public? See none. If there's any discussion from the bench? See none. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the travel.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll, members cast their vote. Have received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
So let's start off with appointments. I got a bunch. But we'll go with Councilmember Holheisel first.
Yes, Bob. Is it appropriate to make the appointment for the McCray Renaming Committee from the bench?
It is.
Then I would like to nominate Mary Dean. Or appoint Mary Dean, I suppose.
What was that name again?
Mary Dean.
Mary Dean.
Yep.
For a moment, I thought you said mayor. I thought you were pointing me to this, and I was gonna...
Well, you're a constituent, so I think I do have that authority, right?
All right, further appointments. I will be reappointing to the Wichita Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Shelley Hammond. Reappoint to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board, Anthony Mye. Reappoint to the Downtown Streets and Parking Steering Committee, Larry Weber, Susie Santo, Debbie Frazier, Alan Kaler, Joe Johnson, Steve Solentrop, Victor Ojalei, Chris Whitney. And then I will also be appoint to the Design Council, Matt Cortez. And finally, appointment to the Bill McCray Naming Committee, Mr. James Barfield. And I'll be happy to give the clerk the list at the end of the meeting. Are there any further appointments at this time? If there's no further appointments, then I'll make the motion to accept the appointments as they were mentioned.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll, members cast the vote. Have received 68 votes, that motion does pass. Back on comments, are there comments for the good? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to take this moment to recognize a frequent critic, but passionate advocate for Wichita. Celeste Russett has been organizing multiple volunteers over the last few weeks to be... Celeste Russett has been organizing multiple volunteers over the last few weeks to beautify the former main public library, along with a price wooded park. She has got a group out there today. She's mobilized, I think, over a hundred volunteers, secured donations from Lowe's. They've planted over a hundred materials. So, again, as much as she likes to criticize us and admonish us, she does put her passion behind good efforts as well. And so, I just want to thank her for all that work, and it's advance of the River Festival. So, really helps at a time that we need it to beautify downtown Wichita when we got a lot of people visiting us. So, just want to give a shout out to her and her volunteers.
Councilmember Hoheizel.
Thank you. First, I'd like to piggyback off of Councilmember Frye's appreciation of Celeste. And in the same vein, we have a similar event coming up this Saturday, Brush Up Broadway from eight o'clock to noon, where we will be cleaning up the South Broadway corridor and going back and painting over graffiti. I would also like to show my appreciation to the Firefighters Union. The Fallen Firefighters Memorial was actually tagged a couple of weeks ago by graffiti, and they were out there last Saturday scrubbing it away, and it looks great. So, I'd like to show my appreciation for them and extend an invitation out to anybody listening to come and help clean up South Broadway on the Saturday. Thank you.
Excellent. I have a few things. First, want to thank the hundreds of volunteers who came out for the river cleanup a few, couple of weeks ago. A huge turnout, it was a great event. A lot of folks were there. I want to thank the radio station for being there and creating this a great atmosphere, and just the volunteers who are able to go out and beautify our city, especially before the nice weather, so that when folks are out and about, they can enjoy the city a little better because it will be more clean. Also, want to wish Megan Lovely, our communications person, a happy birthday. My understanding is it's her birthday, or yesterday was her birthday, as she posted online that she took down all the decorations. I don't think she likes birthdays, but we want to make sure as a council, we let her know that we appreciate her. Couple other items. One, we will go into executive session or have a motion for executive session after this, but before that, I would like to be consistent with the comments, particularly about the item for towing contracts. I would like to, and Legal can help me with this, announce an emergency meeting for Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, in pursuant to Section two-point-oh-four-point-two-ten of our ordinance. The understanding is that this would start at nine AM in the council chambers. Each member of the council will be served with an electronic notification. This meets the at least two hours prior to the meeting, as dictated within the ordinance. And the ordinance states that the notice will be issued by the clerk. So, sorry to give you more work, but we're to ask to direct the clerk to give the notice to not only the council, but also make a public notice of this. And that will be Wednesday, twenty-fifth, nine AM, here in the council chamber. And did I miss anything? Is that in order? Thank you. So, that will happen this upcoming Wednesday. With that... Excuse me, next Wednesday, that's what I meant, my apologies. Next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. So, I'm with the City Council, recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive information on an offer of settlement on a contractual dispute pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen-B-two, for a legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for potential litigation, legal advice, claim settlement. Executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. So, we would ask that this start at twelve o'clock and go till twelve-fifteen, in which we will reconvene back in the chamber. Is, that is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll, members have cast their vote. Ever receive sixty-eight votes, we will be in executive session at twelve o'clock in the other room. Thank you.